All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 13, 2020 Lake Washington School Board's study session. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and participating remotely. And all meeting participants must also and will also be joining this meeting remotely in alignment with the current proclamation issued by Governor Inslee. The board meeting will be livestreamed and viewable on the district website. And if you are unable to livestream, or you know somebody who's unable to livestream, viewers can call in at 425-936-2805, or 425-936-2809. And the conference ID is 471683. And by calling in and entering that conference ID, you can listen to the meeting. Regular board meetings and study sessions will continue to be livestreamed on the website and posted for viewing within two days. We have two topics on the agenda tonight. The first is the Facility Advisory Committee Report.
And so, the board will remember just maybe two months ago, Associate Superintendent Barbara Posthumas brought an update on the Facilities Advisory Committee work to apprise the board of work to date. Today, Barbara has an update on where the committee is, their draft recommendations, and next steps for community engagement. With that, I'll pass it over to Barbara so she can share her screen and presentation.
Thank you very much. So thumbs up, Sean, if you can see my screen. Okay, great. So, thank you, everyone. As Dr. Holman mentioned, we are sharing the recommendations of our Facility Advisory Committee. And tonight, we are going to review their work to date and their recommendations, and then provide the board time for questions and comments. So, just a reminder of the Facility Advisory Committee purpose. They were brought together this year to bring recommendations on future facility planning, looking at enrollment trends, and the goal is to align their strategy with our district strategic plan, and the need to accommodate our rapid enrollment growth, so that we can continue to provide quality learning environments. The superintendent and the school board will consider these recommendations in order to plan for future ballot measures and fund construction. Background, the committee met from November through May of 2020. The main purpose was to review the work. We had a long-term Facility Task Force provide recommendations in 2014. That formed, and then we had a Bond Advisory Committee that formed, recommended four phases for bonds. One of those phases, one of those bonds passed, the 2016 bond, and the second bond did not pass. And we knew we'd need to have a mid-year check-in anyway, so that's why we brought this committee back together. They reviewed current student growth projections and capacities, and then they also reviewed the original recommendations by the Task Force and provide any needed revisions or updates, and provided recommendations on future needs and financing options. So, we had, the members, the committee was comprised of parents, business communities, senior citizens. We had each of our cities represented, Kirkland, Sammamish, and Redmond, and then we had district staff. We have, and the committee was facilitated by Penny Maybe of Enviro Issues, and she is on the study session call tonight, so we can certainly hear from Penny tonight. We also have two members that helped write the official recommendations document, and Antran is with us tonight, and Martha Damon is with us tonight. And then, I'll just point out that Eric LaLiberty was the school board representative on the committee as well. We had, over the course, November through May, we had eight meetings, and four of those meetings were in-person. And so, we, in our initial meeting in November, was kind of orientating ourself to the work, reading the history. Then, we really focused on enrollment capacity at the second meeting, continued to look at the issues of growth facing our district. In January and February, we reached out to the community and did a thought exchange, and got feedback on our aging, on our facilities and enrollment growth. And then, we had a, what we call a workshop in February, where that's where the committee really came together to begin developing the project plan on what projects. And we shared with the board at a study session those enrollment projections that happened. So, we're not going to go into those in detail tonight. And then, then COVID hit, and so, the good news was, we continued to meet, we just did it remotely. So, our last four meetings, April and May, we actually held three meetings in April, were covered online remotely. And so, we focused on funding at the first April meeting, and then the next two meetings were really working on our project plan. What should we build? How much does it cost? And then, our last meeting was refining the recommendations. And we did share a lot of that work to date with the board at the board meeting in May. This is just some pictures of our in-person meeting. To the left, where we're working on projects, and then, when we came together virtually, how we kind of shared options and strategies. Some of the key findings that I wanted to highlight, and the board has been given the detailed recommendations document, and then, we will also make sure that's posted on our website. Key findings from the committee, that the district has successfully implemented many of the recommendations from the Task Force. We are continuing to face unprecedented growth, which is resulting, making our schools overcapacity, overcrowded, and we need more space. And we also continue to have, while many of our aging schools have been rebuilt, we still have aging schools that need remodeling or replaced, and that do not meet our current educational specifications. And then, we also know, the committee understood that land is just very limited in the district. So, the availability for new schools is limited right now. And back to the aging schools comment, you know, we, our facility staff, our maintenance staff does a great job working hard to maintain and keep our aging schools looking really brand-new. And so, but they just don't meet our current educational specs. They're more costly to maintain in the long run. Some of the recommendations from the committee is to prioritizing building additional classroom capacity and address aging facilities. When we construct new buildings, ensure that there is enough capacity in those buildings, and then also maximize the use of land at existing school sites. As we shared with the committee, you know, land is scarce, but we do have some school sites with property that is what we call underdeveloped. So, there's, when we, Comicon is an example of that. When Comicon, when it is rebuilt, we could actually provide additional buildings on that property. And so, using our existing property, existing space to create more capacity for buildings is an option. And then, build with innovation in mind. Again, looking at other urban school designs, and again, height, building more stories, so you can get more square footage on less land capacity. And then, continue to educate and inform the community about our capacity needs and aging facility status. And as much as we share with the community, it's just the committee reminded us to just keep talking about our needs and our aging facilities.
Barbara, before you move on, can you talk about that fourth bullet, and how you informed the Task Force of what does urban school design look like?
Absolutely. So, we, at one of our meetings, we shared some of designs with the committee that urban schools and that some private schools in Seattle have built. So, schools that really are built with limited parking, schools that are built, you know, five to six stories, schools with, you know, limited outdoor space, and maybe building, we saw school with the, you know, gym on the upper floor. And so, one of the things that we did is, you know, so we shared with the committee some of those designs, and just that those would be options for us to consider as we, you know, as we're looking to build new spaces. And so, and so, it wasn't that, so, yeah. John, can you, is there anything else that I missed that you want me to talk about?
No, I think that just helps. So, if we were in a place where we were considering a school in an urban setting, that's essentially a similar process. We would go to educate ourselves as a district. It's about looking at who is actually implemented in urban design. What does the footprint look like that we have? What's the age of the students that we're thinking about? And how would we make that space work for us, our district, and our kids? And so, it's kind of this, educate ourselves about what is out there, so that when we come upon an opportunity, we actually have some of that information already in our back pocket, but also know that we would have to further educate ourselves around urban design and an innovative type setting, based on what the parameters and variables are that we're working with.
Right. And also knowing that that is also new for our cities. And so, they also, we have to kind of partner with them, and they have to come alongside us in order to be successful at some of those designs as well. All right. The next two slides I'm going to show is the recommendations about the projects that the committee made. Again, we, they worked for multiple meetings to look at our capacity, look at our enrollment projections, look at where we were short capacity, and then make recommendations on what facilities, what do we need to build in order to solve some of those capacity shortfalls. So, you can see on the chart, so let me orient you to the chart. Up in the, so, each, it's divided by high school, middle school, and then on the next slide, it's elementary and other. And then, we're dividing it into our four learning areas, Wanita, Lake Washington, Redmond, and Eastlake. And then, in each area, we show what's called the capacity shortfall. And the committee looked out 10 years. So, this is really a 10-year window, and showed, looking at our enrollment projections through the year 2029-30, and then, what, how much capacity will we have based on those projections? So, for example, in the Wanita learning area, the first number is, represents capacity shortfall with portables, and the second number is without portables. So, in the Wanita learning area, at the high school level, there is not a capacity shortfall right now. But let me go down to the middle school in the Wanita learning area. Keep, with all the portables that we have, the shortfall in, through 29-30 is 55 students. If we remove all the portables, the shortfall is 202 students. So, that's kind of how to read this. So, going across in the Lake Washington learning area, there are no portables at the high school, or there won't be, once we move the portables off the Lake Washington High School campus with our new addition. They still, through the next 10 years, will have a 500-student shortfall. And then, in the Redmond learning area, it's a 429-student shortfall with, and then, without portables. If we took the portables away there, it would be a 641-student shortfall. And then, I want to also highlight, in the Eastlake area, that is showing zero shortfall right now. But I also want to point out that in, we put an addition, both at Redmond High School and at Eastlake High School, back in 2011. We've also made interior, done remodel, interior remodeling at Eastlake to provide additional planning areas for teachers. So, we've done a lot of additions and interior remodeling at Eastlake to get their capacity to house over 2,000 students when the original building was designed for much less. And so, sticking with our high school, the recommendations by the committee, so in the Wanita learning area, there were no additional buildings needed in the Wanita learning area. Their recommendation in the Lake Washington learning area was to build a new, again, smaller type choice high school. And that is similar to what was on the recommendation from the 2014 Task Force. And then, in the Redmond and Eastlake learning area, you'll see it, the same wording twice, to build a choice school either in Redmond Learning Community or Learning Area or Eastlake. And so, it's not build one in Redmond Learning Area and build a second one in Eastlake, but it's really in either area, because it really helps provide capacity relief to both Redmond and Eastlake. And then, in the Redmond Learning Area, they recommended building an addition at Redmond High School. And then, so I'll move on to the middle school, and then I'll take questions. So, in the Wanita learning area, you can see the capacity shortfall is 202 without portables. And so, one of their recommendations was to rebuild or expand Comicon to 900 capacity. And again, Comicon is both an aging facility, and it's also one of our facilities that has the capacity once that's remodeled to potentially provide other space or other buildings on that same property to provide some other programs. And then, another suggestion was just to re-boundary to alleviate Finhill capacity. And then, they also talked about potentially moving choice school campuses when schools are rebuilt to allow for potential capacity needs relief from the Lake Washington learning area. So, moving on to the Lake Washington learning area, again, their capacity shortfall without portables is approximately 473 students. So, one of their suggestions is to build an addition to bring Kirkland Middle School. That's one of our smallest middle schools right now. So, to build an addition there to bring it to at least 800-student capacity. And then, that would mean reboundering Rose Hill Middle and Kirkland Middle to balance enrollment there. So, again, and then potential for moving Choice School to rebalance enrollment. In the Redmond Learning Area, capacity shortfall is about 274. So, at this time, it's reboundering between middle schools, and that's Timberline and Redmond Middle, because we just opened Timberline there. And then, at Eastlake, Evergreen is also an aging school. And so, rebuild or expand Evergreen, and it also is one of our schools with many aging portables. And then, also re-boundary to alleviate capacity at Inglewood Middle School, overcapacity at Inglewood Middle School. And I'll just pause. The next slide, I'll talk about elementary and other programs, but is there any questions, brief questions on this slide that I didn't address before we move to the next slide?
Looks like Chris has a question.
Okay.
So, thanks, Barbara. I'm trying to, I think I understand the choice in either Redmond or Eastlake at the high school level. But it's that 06, the bottom right corner. When you've got zero excess students, we're rebuilding or expanding Evergreen Middle School, and we're re-boundary. I feel like there's too much information that's been compressed in here somewhere, because I don't understand why we would need to rebound or re-boundary or rebuild if we have zero excess students.
So, right now, as you know, Inglewood is really at or slightly exceeding capacity. And they are our largest middle school, and, you know, over 1,200 students. And Evergreen, we just reduced the number of students attending Evergreen because we opened Timberline. And Evergreen will grow slightly larger in the next 10 years. But Evergreen is also on there because of the age of the school, and it doesn't meet the current ed specs. It's got, we've had to, it's got outdoor space that we converted to indoor space. It's just, it's an aging school that needs updated. So, that's one of the reasons.
Yeah, I just feel like, to communicate this publicly, it would be helpful if we could break that out as a separate problem. Because that basically means that an update at Evergreen, yes, that may be required, but you don't need to rebuild it because it's got six excess students. And by confusing the two issues, because it's totally legitimate, and I think we need the community to know that Wanita High School is not the last facility where we need to rebuild the darn facility, because it's just antiquated. And hopefully, someday, we'll get to the point where we can actually have those be the primary thing we need to do, as opposed to adding capacity. But splitting it out is a separate problem, I think, would be valuable for communicating this publicly.
Sure. And we, I believe, in the detailed recommendations, it does outline some of the reasons why these projects were spoken. So, it's not as clear on the PowerPoint. I appreciate that.
I also want to remind the board of, a school like Inglewood, the current capacity we have listed for them is because of what we have done to the school site. And so, we've been, you know, able to increase their capacity, but we haven't increased their footprint other than the 20-classroom addition we did, you know, 15 years ago. Barbara, 20 years? I mean, something like that, where it was an intentional decision to make Inglewood a larger school. And even with that larger footprint of a middle school, we've had to do interior modifications to continue to increase capacity, which really is about assuring that our classroom usage, the percent time classrooms are being used is increased. And even with that, we're having to add portables to that campus to be able to deal with their capacity for their enrollment.
Yeah, we're adding two portables this summer to Inglewood, because they continue to grow. So, all right. Any other, I can't see when hands are up, so.
Siri has her hand up.
Okay.
Hi. So, just following up. So, on the high school piece, knowing we have increased utilization within all our high schools, and I believe both Redmond and, and, sorry, Eastlake are both at 2,000. There was, I remember back, 1,800 is where we were viewing as what it is. So, whereas I recognize these components of what's being spoken to and the capacity that currently exists, that was not the value that was put forward. We've done that out of need. And so, I'm a little concerned, as I'm not hearing how we're going to, and I'm not sure if that was talked about in regards to overall size. As I look at the high school level, I see choice schools, and two of them, where it's a discussion around a comprehensive high school, and another idea of a fifth comprehensive high school, because there's always a discussion around those pieces. So, I'm just curious where that sort of laid out with it, as this plays forward, because there's always, if these, and we had a discussion from the group in Portland, the consultants, who were doing the utilization, they talked to percent utilization. And we were talking about what's that, where are we at, and how does that drive things? So, I'm not seeing that reflected here, and I'm curious how it played out.
Yeah. So, let me, I'll answer your last question first. So, this presentation, you're right, doesn't, I haven't repeated kind of some of the capacity, the detailed enrollment projections that we shared earlier with the board. So, that's not repeated in this presentation, though it is available on our website. And in the past, in our May presentation that we did to the board, that utilization was shared at that time. So, I'm just not repeating it here. Then, your first question, going back to, did the committee talk about a comprehensive high school? And yes, they did. Some of the committee members recommended a fifth comprehensive high school. And so, it did not make the final recommendations, because what we shared with them is, it's, a comprehensive high school is typically built on around 40 acres of property. And in a, the current model that we have, okay, not a, not a urban, you know, 10-story high school that accommodates 1,800 students. So, and it would be unlikely that we have 40 acres of land available to us to build a true comprehensive high school. And so, that was why the committee made recommendations on what, you know, a smaller choice high school that can alleviate the capacity, the capacity at Eastlake and Redmond, and then in Lake Washington. So, that was kind of, that was how the recommendation came out.
Again, I just questioned, having not been there, my question would be along the lines of, we know 40 acres isn't an option, right? So, but if there's no discussion around what does a comprehensive look like, that doesn't require that. I'm hard-pressed to see how we'll ever shift to thinking about that. So, is there a plan to do that in the future?
So, I think what you're asking is, what's the largest, yeah, what's, how could we, is there a design out there that builds an 1,800 high school without fields? And, yes.
Or maybe it's 1,000, and we do comprehensive. So, I guess my question is, I'm concerned that I'm seeing similar things, and I'm just wondering, did we do enough conversation of potentials of where we could go, of possibilities? I guess that's my question.
And I, and I'll let, I think at the end, I'll bring, I'll let Penny and some of our committee members also speak to that. But we did also, when it says build a new choice school, we looked at options. It doesn't mean just a, right now, our choice high school is 600 students. We looked at options of a 1,000-capacity smaller high school. And so, we did, we talked about those. And so, this model, or building a choice high school doesn't necessarily tie it down to size. Does that make sense?
It does. I guess my concern is just that we keep having, our comprehensives currently are going up, 1,800, 2,000. We add more space. Now, we're, again, we're dealing with size issues, which brings other issues, because common space isn't there. How do you get everybody in? And again, that's my concern.
Can I chime in real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think, so, my operational definition of comprehensive high school is one that has the full services and opportunities for activities and athletics that our four comprehensives, Wanita, Lake Washington, Redmond, Eastlake, offer. And so, I think, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, Siri, what you're offering is, do we have a neighborhood high school concept that draws students that isn't comprehensive in nature, that doesn't provide all of that on campus? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think we need to explore options of, are there ways to partner and provide that in different ways? You know, sharing stadiums, sharing space. If it's, how do we utilize all our tools to really sort of attack this? Choice is one tool. I think there are other tools we're not exploring as effectively as we could.
And so, in that, would, in the reason I use the term neighborhood high school, one that has an actual draw, like our comprehensive high schools do, but it may be to a different type of campus? Is that, okay?
Yep. And ways of, the challenge with our choice schools right now, and everybody knows, is from an equity standpoint, there are definite issues when you look at our demographic makeup of these schools, and we have not succeeded at changing that. And so, my concern is that we really need to keep thinking about how we place our schools, think about our schools, our programming in our schools to ensure equitable access and opportunity. And that's not just space, it's as well as programming and different things. So, I guess that would be the piece I would look. So, I'd like to challenge that we think outside that box a little further going forward. And I know this still has to go out to the community and get feedback from there. So, I think that's another component.
Yep. And there was, just, you know, and that was one of the reasons, one of the recommendations was build an addition at Redmond High School separately, was, again, the realization that we don't have a lot of vacant land out there, that we can build either a 600-student school or a 1,000-student school on. And so, even though it's our desire to keep our high schools in the 1,800, 2,000-student range, it may not be possible, and we may need to have larger schools. But within those schools, you know, again, the methods that you use to make every student, you know, feel like they're in a small school. So, that was a conversation as well.
So, I'm wondering, as those conversations happen, sort of the So I'm wondering, as those conversations happen, sort of the collateral challenges that come from bigger schools, transportation, having to draw from bigger areas, people come in, those pieces that fall, losing a sense of, of connection within that is of opportunities that get less. So that would be my one piece to really, I, I guess that's my question on these recommendations. How do we dive into that? And we talked about this two years ago, honestly, of really trying to dive into those possibilities a little more around redoing ed specs on our facility. And so 40 acres, and we have different tools, warehouses, you know, Eastside Prep sits in an office park. So when will that happen?
Well, I, and I think, and so in order to, when it says build, and again, if the choice school is the sticking point, we don't have to call, it can be a neighborhood school or a choice school. We need a smaller, um, high school that can be built on less land. And you're right, it can be in a warehouse, it can be in other places. It doesn't mean we're going to build it from, you know, the ground up. It all depends on what we can find. So if, if the task is we need to build additional high school space, then we, then our charge will be, we've got to go out and figure out where that space is and acquire it, right? So, and whether that's we acquire property and build, or we acquire a warehouse and remodel, it still requires us to, um, acquire, um, the facility or the property.
It'd be interesting to look at what's sort of a long-term concept, if it is a neighborhood school or a choice, and each learning community, how would that look and be? And then how do you start to, so sort of a, a larger capital facility plan across the board is sort of a piece that would be helpful. But, okay. No, thanks. I appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions? Again, knowing I can't see the hands.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands. So it's going to elementary.
Great. I will, I will move on to the next slide. So this slide encompasses the recommendations for elementary schools. And, um, as you can see, uh, in this area, sorry, the chart is a little further off. On my slide, it looks just perfect. So, but when I see it on the screen, it's a little off-centered. So anyway, in the, uh, you can see in the Wanita learning area, um, we have a capacity shortfall in the next, um, 10 years. With portables of 75 students, removing portables, it's about 400 students. And as you know, as part of our 2019 levy capacity projects, we are moving 10 portables to the Wanita elementary schools, to Wanita elementary area schools this summer. So we are already having to add more portables to, um, schools there. So, um, right now, the recommendations from the committee are really not to build any more space in Wanita, but to potentially look for, and this is a combination of an elementary school recommendation and an other recommendation, but to move preschools potentially off the elementary campuses to alleviate the capacity needs, the shortfall. And then that would require either building or acquiring space, um, for preschools. That's again, do you convert a warehouse that you find or retail space, um, for preschools? So in the Lake Washington learning community, um, the recommendation, um, so we have a shortfall of 47, uh, with portables and 668 without portables. And this is consistent with the, um, 2014 task force is adding, uh, one new elementary school. Again, we have through the 2019, um, levy, um, knowing that we had urgent capacity needs because the bond that was going to build on this elementary school did not pass. We went ahead and did additions at three of our Lake Washington area elementary schools. And so, um, and so again, and then also as we do every year, we look at potential, is there potential for moving programs or reboundering? So we would do the same thing in the Lake Washington learning area. In the Redmond learning area, um, we went through, we've shared, uh, at one of our meetings, talking about, I mentioned that the district has property that we, because it's outside the urban growth area, it's not allowed to be developed. We also have sites where we have, uh, property that is underutilized. I mentioned Kamaiakon, Redmond Elementary is another site that has, um, that has, we have Redmond Elementary, we have Old Redmond Schoolhouse. And then we also have, um, a vacant kind of field that you could build additional capacity. So that was one of the recommendations from the committee is to use that site to build additional capacity. Rockwell is another one of our aging schools. And so they're recommending to rebuild and expand Rockwell. And then again, continuing to re-boundary to alleviate capacity. And then in the Eastlake learning area, uh, rebuild and expand Alcott Elementary and Smith Elementary. Those are again, are two of our aging elementary schools. And Alcott, uh, was on that, um, 2018 bond that did not pass. And then continue to re-boundary, as I've mentioned, in, in all of the other learning areas. And then the other, um, in the other area, um, and so the committee really focused on, um, space for students. We did, uh, we hope to get to talk about also staff, uh, needs, space for staff, space for training, warehouse space as we grow from, you know, the sixth largest school district to the second largest school district. And, uh, we're going to continue to need space for staff, um, and again, space for support needs. We weren't, the committee did not, wasn't able to spend time on that. So the district is going to do an internal audit of kind of space needs for staff and provide a recommendation on that. So the, the other really focused still on our student needs. And one of the, in the Wanita learning area, um, the committee recognized that the Wanita, uh, field house and pool, needed, uh, interior refurbishment and, um, and then also mentioned partnering with local government, um, for continued athletic field use. Um, and then they mentioned build or acquire space for preschools. And the preschool recommendation was common throughout all the learning areas because if you, um, can build or acquire a space for preschools, then you could remove those classrooms, those preschools from the, and create capacity at our elementary schools. And, um, so that was the recommendation, um, at the elementary level and at the other level. Any questions on those? Okay, I will keep moving. So the committee spent, uh, also learned about kind of funding options for capital facilities. We use both, have used both bonds and levies in the past. And so they recommended continuing to use bonds for capital facilities, um, pursue a bond strategy over multiple years. Again, we looked at a 10-year timeframe. All of the, uh, use capital levies as a fallback strategy if the bond measure fails. And then, um, all the, um, and then continue to advocate to the state legislature for 50% approval threshold for school bond measures. So one of the things, uh, that if every single project on those last two, um, slides, uh, were done, then it would be approximately, um, $660 million in projects. And that doesn't really include the preschool projects, but, um, and those are, those are 2020 amounts without inflation. So, um, one of the things, when they looked at kind of funding recommendations, they talked, the committee talked both about larger bonds, less often, smaller bonds more often. And so, um, one of their, uh, recommendations is, is doing it more often. But there was, you know, there was not a hundred percent consensus on that. And so again, they made assumptions on keeping the tax rate level would provide about a $485 million, um, bond amount. And so it couldn't do all the projects on the list. If we wanted to do all the projects on the list, we would need to probably have a, a tax, um, it would increase the tax rate. So. And then the committee also talked about, um, there was, while the committee came together, we split up, because we were holding virtual meetings, we split up into small subgroups to provide recommendations. And, um, we had about five smaller groups and each group, um, kind of tried to prioritize and make recommendations on which phase projects would, would come into. But we, um, by the time our May meeting came around, we weren't able to, um, uh, while each subgroup provided recommendations, we did not come back together to provide one final recommendation on which order the projects would go on. And so there was consensus on the first phase that we would definitely rebuild and expand Kamaiakon Middle School. And the recommendation was to rebuild and expand Alcott, um, Elementary School. Other projects to be considered, um, in the first bond phase is again, this new small high school option, choice or urban, either in Redmond or the Lake Washington Learning Community. And then the new, a new elementary in Lake Washington and in Redmond. So those were things that we heard, um, from many of the subgroups as what they wanted to focus on. So the criteria that they, um, and let me just back up to talk again about why Kamaiakon and why Alcott. And I talked a little bit about that before, but, um, we talked about the Kamaiakon being property that once that's redeveloped, you could also, um, use that, take advantage of the Kamaiakon site to build more capacity, such as a preschool, such as a, um, a, a smaller, um, again, choice school or, um, neighborhood school, uh, that is a smaller option. And we could also partner with the city to build, to, for shared community space on that site. Alcott was recommended by the committee because again, it's aging, it's the school with, the elementary school right now with the most portables. We have, I think, 12 to 13 portables on that site. And it also has a large footprint, um, that it could provide additional options when that school is rebuilt. So the criteria that the committee looked at was, uh, again, prioritize projects that address both capacity and aging schools. Spread when we look at doing our bond, uh, projects, spread the projects across the district's learning areas and across levels. And then prioritize schools that have capacity issues and underdeveloped land. And as we shared with the board in May, we did a thought exchange in January and February. What are the most important perspectives to consider as we plan for future facilities to accommodate growth in our district? We received more than 1,200 responses, a very good, um, uh, response for a survey. We shared those responses with the committee. We intended to go back to the community, um, before our last meeting in May, um, and we weren't able to do that. And so we wanted to make sure that we will, so the committee recommended that we go back in the fall and, um, share with the community kind of our draft, uh, recommendations on kind of the funding plan. And so we'll be, um, doing that. And so we'll be, so tonight I want to take the board's additional questions and comments, but we plan on, um, doing additional community engagement in the fall, really looking at funding and phasing of the recommended projects. And then, uh, the facility advisor committee will finalize kind of those recommendations. And then we'll receive a final recommendation, um, in the January, February, uh, timeline. So that is our plan for next steps. So that, um, concludes my PowerPoint. Are there any other questions?
Cassandra has her hand raised.
Okay.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Um, I know I am sitting here wishing that we had all this extra space right now so that we could, um, teach more children in person in the fall. So we had the space to spread out and have those lower classroom sizes. Are you going to be doing as part of your community engagement in the fall? Will you be doing more thought exchanges where larger groups of parents and community members can give input?
Yes.
Is that part of it?
Yeah. I mean, our hope initially was to do an in-person, um, you know, provide, um, you know, kind of an open house where we share kind of our enrollment projections, our capacity challenges, you know, project recommendations and do that in person. And so that what we don't know yet is if we'll be able to do something in person and we'll, or we'll have to do a virtual open house. And so I'll be working with Shannon Parthamer and, uh, our director of communications to kind of determine what that, um, open house may look like, whether it's virtual and in-person. And our goal is yes, to get as many community members to provide us feedback. We also, as the board shared in May, uh, we want to make sure we get student voice in the room as well. And so making sure we have an opportunity to hear from our students.
Thanks. I, you know, can't stress enough how much I wish that that 2018 bond had passed so that we were in a better position right now to, uh, provide learning environments for our students going back to school in the fall. I'm also very conscious of our community members who have lost their jobs and who are finding themselves newly food insecure. And, um, I think the reality is we definitely need a lot of community engagement around this topic as we go forward.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have anything, questions? I, I do not. Okay.
Can I just, I just want to, is there any, um, Penny, I just, Penny is on the, let me just make sure. I just want to have Penny say hello and, um, our facilitator. And if there's anything else that you want to just add, again, the committee, uh, Penny did great job facilitating. Thank you for your work. We're not quite done. And, uh, but I, I just can't say enough how much, uh, when we had to go virtual, um, the meeting, you know, it was really every committee member, we didn't lose any committee members because we went virtual and it just worked out really well. So I appreciate Penny for, for doing all that work. And Penny's got this great turtle mural on her wall behind her. She's really not in the sea, but she is, uh, it's a nice mural on her wall. So Penny, is there anything else you want to add? But again, thank you, uh, for all your work with us on this. Oh, you're muted. Still muted. Maybe John can unmute her. No? Oh.
And I can't, oh, there I go.
There you are. All right.
I think that, oh dear, I hear a terrible echo.
You're good. You're good.
Okay, good. I, I think the questions that were asked by board members tonight were exactly the places where the committee had the biggest work, the biggest struggle, and would have loved a lot more time to get deeper into the details. So I think the energy is there and, uh, and support for some of these innovative approaches. Other than that, I think the group was great and they did really fine work.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Ann and Martha, for being here and listening, uh, to, uh, and they did, Ann and Martha did a lot of work on writing, helping write the recommendations that represented the committee's ideas. So I want to thank them too as well. So, all right.
And Barbara, before you move on, I want to make sure, uh, board members, could you give us direction around Siri's comment around some additional work around a, I'll just use the term neighborhood high school concept because it is different than a choice school concept. And the reason I'm asking for this is I remember, uh, what, 15, 18 years ago, when an intentional decision was made not to build a fifth choice or fifth comprehensive high school. And instead of building a fifth, uh, comprehensive, we started implementing a choice high school strategy to accommodate growth. And that's why, uh, you see Tesla STEM High School, that's why we've had, uh, previous choice high schools on bond measures. And so what Siri brought forward tonight is a bit of a different concept that we, to be honest with you, that has not been the strategy that we have been focused on over the last 10, 15, 20 years. And so if the board wants us to actually study a neighborhood high school concept where if you live in that neighborhood, you're going to that high school, uh, I think that's a bit of a different ask that Barbara and the team would probably have to spend a little bit more time on if they were to fully answer that question because it's not a choice school. Because a choice school is kids from. Because a choice school is kids from across the district saying, I want to go there. What we're saying, what I think Siri said was, I want information about a school where we tell a community of students, here is your school. And so can we get some direction around that?
Mark, I guess, Mark had his hand raised first, then Cassandra, then I'll, I'll go. Hey, Mark, you're on mute.
Okay, okay. You hear me?
Yep.
My concern with the community high school, and it's, and maybe fixable, to tell students in a high school situation they wouldn't have the capacity for athletics, I think is going to be met very poorly within the health community because the idea of physical fitness, exercise, so forth. We'd have, I think you'd almost have to partner up with given private fields, if you will, the various leagues that are out there, because you're not going to get away from having some kind of athletic activities in those schools, especially with that, you've got, you're going to limit your ability to gather students. My other concern about continuing with the, the program we have of select schools is the inequities. We have a lottery system that, you know, doesn't provide really for equity when you go down to it. If you want to go to a choice school, you end up having to, the transportation options are limited. And I know that there are some parents, even within the choice schools, that are concerned about having their students kind of separated from the, the other students because it then gives them a false sense of what other students' needs are and what their capacity is. So I'm, I'm kind of torn, I know we don't have the 40 acres, but one more choice school might just be a little bit, look a little bit too elitist. I don't, I don't know. I want to think about it in, in the context of our equity program.
Yeah, and I, I think what I heard Siri say was, a neighborhood school that had all of the same offerings as our other comprehensive high schools, but the campus might look different, so we may need to offer athletics, drama, those types of things in a different way than we currently do at a 40-acre comprehensive site.
I think it's reaching to the urban innovative concept is what the idea of the neighborhood school would be. I think that was a good way to put it when it said urban or choice. I think that was a useful concept.
Cassandra, you want to go first?
Sure. I don't think we can avoid the fact that we are in an area that is continuing to grow despite a global pandemic, and what we thought about 15 years ago as a school building is probably not going to work going forward. So I've been to several presentations by WASTA and people at NSBA that Siri has probably also sat in on, on different ways that you can provide education in a much more modern sort of urban setting, which is what we are becoming. I also think that, don't students at Tesla typically go to their home school for athletics? And maybe one of the opportunities is, we take that neighborhood school and, you know, have students go to, say if it's between Redmond and Eastlake, then the students would equally be balanced between Redmond and Eastlake for activities? John's smiling, he's like, you have no idea.
No, it's, so this is helping us, because all of this would then get wrapped into what a review would look like. And to be honest with you, I'm hearing a different direction from the board than I've heard before. So I feel like I'm hearing from the board, move away from your choice school strategy. So I just want to be clear about that before we march down a different path.
That is not my, am I muted? No, that is not my, my opinion. So maybe, maybe, maybe everyone else has moved in a different direction. But I, I think the idea of looking at, you know, urban design, urban design schools is great, and we need to be doing that, we need to be thinking about constructing our schools, particularly our high schools, Pollard. I don't, I just, I, I can't get on board with, right now, with having neighborhood schools that are that way. I think, you know, with the choice school, people, people have the choice to, to attend a school that is, that is different, and may not have the same amenities as their neighborhood school. So, no, that's, I think we need to be thinking about how we design our schools differently, but I, I just, I'm not there with the neighborhood, with making them neighborhood schools.
I, I am also reluctant to sign on to that. I'm interested in innovation, but I want to see the innovation presented in the context of the problems it's solving. I'm not certain that the neighborhood schools solve the problems more or less effectively than the choice schools at this point. But I want to see it done. I mean, honestly, this is all part of the conversation around our choice schools and equity in serving them as well. This is kind of something, it's just saying, oh, we're going to leave that alone. I'm still concerned about the absence or virtual, that's a pretty interesting point at our choice schools. But, so yeah, John, I'm, I'm also quite hesitant to say that we're going in a completely different direction. I just want to see you proposing innovative approaches to solve, to threading the needle here, especially with the 40 acres problem being a, probably a $50 to $60 million problem.
And so I would say, I wasn't saying you get rid of choice schools, I was saying you create other opportunities as well. And there could be something you look at, honestly, within your learning communities, you have a larger comprehensive, you have a smaller option that's a comprehensive, that you're, it's in your neighborhood, and then you have a choice option that possibly exists that can pull from a lot of places. So I think we have to just start thinking of what are all the options out there to solve this and be able to address these issues. So I don't, I, I wouldn't take choice schools off the table much as I wouldn't take off a comprehensive high school off the table. Because I honestly believe both of those exist, that it might be right to build a thousand-person high school between Redmond and Kirkland. And a thousand is a really good-sized comprehensive high school. It, it's, it's smaller, so there might be slightly less offerings, but it's plenty big to offer a lot, and many of our school districts around it have that. When you start getting to the 1,800, 2,000 and larger, we have this disparity of a school at 600 and then a school at 2,200. And there is a difference within the provision of relationship building that we speak to, that we talk about right now so much. Then you have the component of remote learning that, you know, Director Stewart was talking about earlier, and, you know, what, how does that? So I just think there's so much shifting of what a school wall or school building looks like and where education happens. How do we start to envision that effectively in our new environment?
I think that's it. We have to have a mindset that allows other ideas in and problem-solving and brainstorming.
And so I guess I would like to at least start examining, what are urban options? What would that mean? How does it do it? What could we do? Kamaiak is a perfect piece of land that they speak to, right, of building. Evergreen Middle School is another option, honestly. Could you go 612 there and provide a neighborhood high school in that area that people could go to as opposed to Redmond or Eastlake? I guess those are all the things of how do we, do we do a K-12 school somewhere that could approach something and put that in an area that's harder to get to? So can we just sort of reimagine different pieces? So there's my piece.
Very good job of giving you direction, John. Other than deep creative.
No, I think it helps.
We're, we're at 9:15.
We've got a big topic.
We still have one other item on the agenda for the study session, which I know we have guests waiting, so I kind of want to hopefully bring this one home now. Anyone else have any last words? No, okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you for the work, thank you for doing the work and the recommendations, greatly appreciated. There's, yes, this is a sticky problem, and I think our current environment makes it even stickier from a financial side, as that's not known either.
Yep.
And the shifting with, with learning and education and what will become. So I think there's, continue that dialogue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do want to thank Barbara and her team and all district staff that participated in that task force. That was a large dedication of time and will continue to be a dedication of time, and so greatly appreciated, appreciate them, Penny and the team and our community for participating. It's, without all of that effort, we aren't then at this place to be able to even have this conversation. So thank you to them, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, the next topic is a report on the City of Kirkland's School Resource Officer Task Force. Dr. Holman?
Yeah, and so tonight, Associate Superintendent Matt Gillingham and his team are here. We also have some honored guests also that are with us that I'll ask Matt to introduce. Tonight's topic is on our School Resource Officer Task Force that the City of Kirkland has been leading and engaged in for the last, I believe, year. This started really with a referendum that funded some additional police supports in Kirkland, and as part of that, they committed to engaging a task force to study the concept of SROs that were presently in Kirkland High Schools, both at Lake Washington and Juanita. And the funding measure was in place to fund SROs at the middle school level. And so tonight, the presentation has three distinct components. And so I'll just ask Matt and team, as you go through each of the components, maybe pause for questions, and at those different points, just so that board members can ask for those, those specific items. With that, I'll turn it over to Matt, thank you.
All right, certainly, thank you. And I want to first start by introducing our team. And so we have Scott Emery is joining us, he's our Director of Risk and Safety Services. And Cedric Collins is our Safety and Security Manager. And then we also have Chief Harris from the Kirkland Police Department, who I believe is on with us as well. We asked her to, to join us to be able to answer some questions and, and represent the City of Kirkland here. There she is. Thank you, Chief, for joining us, appreciate it. I'm going to go and share my screen and then, and go to Presentation. See if we can get this to work. All right. Not going to start subtitles right there. And as Dr. Holman talked about, we have three real parts to the presentation. We're going to first just do a general overview of the School Resource Officer Program in our school district. We're going to give the board a summary or a high-level overview of the work of the School Resource Officer Task Force that, that the City of Kirkland facilitated and that we, the Lake Washington School District, we were partners with. And then there's some legislation that changed the legal requirements for school districts that have school resource officers in them. And so we thought it would be good for the board to be aware of what those new expectations are that we want to meet and exceed moving forward as we have a School Resource Officer Program in our district. And we'll, of course, we'll stop and take a break at each one of those stages, so. And as we think about, well, why are we presenting this to the, the board tonight? Well, first of all, the, the task force had committed to present their, their recommendations to the City of Kirkland Council. They did that on the 7th of July, and, and so we're providing a presentation to the school board, and then at the next board meeting will be an opportunity on the agenda for the school board to accept the task force recommendations. We also think it's important for the board to be aware of what upcoming changes to the School Resource Officer Program as a result of recent legislation. And then I think it's important for us to also hear some of the board's interests around how we want, monitoring this program, because we'll have opportunities to want to come back to the board on an annual basis and share out about the, the program and we have some requirements around data. But it's an opportunity for us to, to hear from the board what, kind of some interests around things that we'd want to be looking at and be sharing back out with the board in the future. So those are our outcomes for, for tonight. And I also want to, you know, we talked about OE10 earlier tonight, and, you know, there's, when we look at our School Resource Officer Program and how we operate that within our school district, it really, we really need to be mindful and thinking about how it fits in the context of OE10. And in particular, I've bolded a couple aspects of the policy that really get to the, kind of the interests that we have in making sure that our School Resource Officer Program helps to support this. And that's ensuring that our students feel welcome and safe in their school environment, that the policies and procedures regarding discipline are collaboratively developed. We'll hear a little bit more about how, moving forward, we'll be doing some work around that with the School Resource Officer Program. And also kind of thinking about the enforced consistency, consistently, that's really important, thinking about the relationship between the School Resource Officer and really our roles as educators. And additionally, we're, the superintendent, we're not, will not tolerate any behaviors or actions by adults that hinder their performance or their well-being. And I think as we, a lot of the conversation that we were having around police in our communities is really looking at that, you know, the, you know, the extent to which, you know, that we don't want our relationship with police to be hindering the well-being of any of our students. And so, so we need to be looking at an eye with that. And then also 10.7 is ensuring that, that we are, you know, not having things that are occurring on our campus that are, are dangerous. And so our School Resource Officers play a role, a role there as well. And that, so let's talk a little bit about the role of a School Resource Officer. And this actually comes from the, from the RCW, Governing School Resource Officers. And I'm not going to read the first bullet, which talks about what a School Resource Officer does, but really that, that second bullet there, I think is really important of, the focus of having a School Resource Officer is not to, essentially to, you know, be a punitive force within our schools, but it's to help keep students out of the criminal justice system, and, and really to also to be very respectful of not handling those matters that are, that we're quite capable of handling and supporting as educators with, with our students. And this was something we talked about quite extensively within the, the task force. I want to, I'm going to give Cedric Collins a moment here to talk a little bit more about the role of a School Resource Officer. As you may know, we actually, Cedric joins us from having been a police officer in the Bothell Police Force, and so he now has kind of that unique perspective of working for schools, but having also been, been a law enforcement officer. And so I'm going to, just Cedric, if you can talk a little bit about kind of the role of a School Resource Officer from your perspective?
Yes, thank you. I'm Cedric Collins, just been with the district only like four months, but it's been experience. So I want a little bit about, I wasn't prepared for this section, I was made me prepare for House Bill 1216, but I will, I will do my best. Let me get back up here, sorry. Okay, for the purpose of the section, I'll just read this part. The School Resource Officer means a commissioned law enforcement officer. You guys know that already. I was a School Resource Officer in the City of Bothell for like three years at a junior high school. And the main thing that we concentrated when I was a School Resource Officer is building relationships. I mean, because when you wear this uniform, you want to be able to interact with the staff, parents, as well as the students, to kind of break down some barriers and, and build solid relationships. So for me, I think that's the number one thing that a School Resource Officer, be able to build those relationships. be able to build those relationships with the community, as well as students, staff, and visitors.
Thanks, Cedric.
Oh, you're welcome.
Now, we have, in our school district, we have School Resource Officers at all of our secondary campuses. As Dr. Holman mentioned earlier, we had previously had, in Kirkland, we had School Resource Officers assigned to Juanita High School and Lake Washington High School. And they would provide support at the middle levels. And as a result of increased funding within, from the City of Kirkland, we're able to expand the School Resource Officer Program to the Kirkland Middle Schools and to Emerson Campus and ICS, similar to how we have our program with the City of Redmond, where we've had that at the middle school levels. So Scott, do you have anything to add in terms of just context of where we've had our SROs or what the programs look like before I ask the Board if they have any questions?
No, I think that's it. You know, you said Redmond has had the model for quite a long time, where they've had Resource Officers in the middle schools. And so the newness of this was really for the City of Kirkland to place SROs in the middle schools on a full-time basis.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I can't see anybody, but this is, at this point, we've kind of provided a brief overview. So before we move into summarizing the Task Force Report, are there any questions from the Board?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, yes.
The, I noticed that STEM isn't on here. Is there not a need for a Resource Officer? Do we not have the funding? What is, I realize it's probably unincorporated, so that means county, but can you give me a breakdown on that?
That's just an oversight on the slide. STEM does have a Resource Officer. Sorry about that. Thanks for pointing that out.
Fine. I'm just very virtual tonight. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm gonna talk, give a little introduction to the City of Kirkland SRO Task Force. And then I'm gonna have Scott walk us through, through some of the details of it. When watching the city, the presentation from the City of Kirkland to their council regarding the timeline, you know, it's really kind of struck me as to having to kind of go back in time two years ago as to what was kind of the genesis of the effort within Kirkland. And so back in March of 2018, this is following the Parkland shooting in Florida, there was a school walkout event. And that led both the City of Kirkland to take action, but then also in partnership with us in the Lake Washington School District, we held a series of town halls throughout our communities and to hear from our community members, their concerns regarding school violence. And it was quite an outpouring of interest, if you think back to that time period. And so within the City of Kirkland, that ultimately led to Resolution 5324 for Enhanced Public Safety and Community Services, which was a ballot measure. And in that ballot measure, that was included funding to expand the School Resource Officer Program within the secondary schools in Kirkland. Along with that was also, there was another Resolution 5339, which created the School Resource Officer Task Force, which really, that work was to look at, how do we ensure that the School Resource Officer Program is using the best practices? And so that's where kind of this came, came from. And, you know, so much has happened over the past couple of years. And so it was just kind of, you know, we have, that was the, that was kind of the impetus or the genesis of this work that we're now seeing the culmination of. So I'm gonna turn it over to Scott and to kind of walk us through the process of the group and then also the, kind of the recommendations from the Task Force.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Thanks for having us here tonight. So as Matt said, this evolved from the tragedy at Parkland and all of those events that took place and the gathering together of our community. And that was certainly important and necessary as we were trying to make sense of what to do with that information. And so the Task Force really came together from the leadership of the City of Kirkland and us as a partner. And they really wanted to look at the SRO program within the city itself as they looked to expand their commitment to SRO services into the middle schools. And that, that came to us after the decision to fund it was already made. And so it was an interesting dialogue. It was about improving or ensuring that the program itself met these these statements from the resolution, rather than the decision whether or not to have SROs. That had already been made. So it gave us an opportunity to really focus in on the specifics of the program, rather than the debate or the conversation around whether we should or shouldn't have them. And that was really freeing to me. It was challenging, but it was freeing to me to have the conversations focus in on the very program itself. It's interesting not having control of the slides. So it authorized the city to partner with us in this resolution and this Task Force and to gather members of our community and have this conversation around the program. And we did that throughout 19. We met once, and in that initial meeting, it really was apparent that the group wasn't well-represented. And so we, our first meeting was spent really talking about who should be present and what voices should we have at the table. And along with the focus of the Task Force being, you know, really evaluating the program, we weren't quite confident in the membership makeup to be able to have that conversation at its best. So if you could go on, Matt. So you can see that after that first meeting, we really looked to expand the committee makeup. And so you can see the types of community members and the organizations that were represented there. And it really grew the committee into a very well-rounded group. And every meeting was lively and certainly full of the voices that we wanted at the table. And then the next slide is the staff members that we had present from both the city and from the district. And we're honored to have Chief Harris here with us tonight. And she's gonna spend a little bit of time when I'm complete, finished here. But it really was a wide range and everyone was fully committed. And it was, they were good meetings. I think there's a slide on how many meetings we had that will show you the, yeah, seven total meetings into January of 2020. After the Task Force had met and we had, the city really worked hard on drafting the recommendations, there was also time for additional feedback. And they, the city that is prepared for sessions for community feedback with representatives from all over, but specifically parents. We wanted representatives to look at the, at the recommendations, not just be part of the recommendation process, but look at them and make sure that we had met the objectives from the original resolution. So as they came forward through the Task Force, the recommendations really focused on the purpose of the SRO program and with the focus specifically on helping students stay out of the criminal justice system. That was really an overwhelming objective of the group. It was easily recognized the benefits of the SROs in their role as a law enforcement officer and the services they provide to our schools and their ability to respond to emergencies and manage those things in the school itself. But our, so our focus was really on the other types of activities that the SRO performs. One of the other issues that we discovered was, over the course of time, as you know, and we have multiple documents, contracts and policies, and even the resolution itself were all written at different times and by different people. And so one of our objectives is to make sure that all of those documents align with each other and that the resolution was, and the recommendations are sort of our guiding documents that tell us what we should align to. We'll talk a little bit more about this, but additionally, while all of this was happening, and Cedric will expand on the House Bill 1216 that expanded the SRO requirements from the state through the school safety rules. But looking at those documents and making sure they're in alignment and then ensuring that they line up with the documents coming from the State Superintendent's Office. You know, I don't want to read these to you, but these are the, some of the specific recommendations that came out of the Task Force. And a couple of the highlights, the proactive communication about SROs, and not just about the program, but the people behind the program, is something that we worked hard at when we rolled out the SROs in the middle schools in January. It's something we hadn't focused on in the past. And that was providing some meet and greet opportunities for parents. And so we had SROs present in the morning for drop-off. We had some evening sessions with talking with your SROs and just provided parents and community opportunity to meet and see them in action in the school setting. And that was really successful, and we want to make sure that that moves forward with the program. And not just when they're new, but we want to be sure parents and community have opportunity to interact with the SROs in general. They are committed individuals and excited to be in our schools. And we want that energy to be shared with our community. Another big thing that we talked about, and one of the resolution points, was the data collection and the reporting. And we want to be sure that as we develop those collection and report processes, that we're not only collecting the information about their interactions with students and arrests and things like that, but all of the very positive things that they do as well. And we want to be sure that we capture their, you know, things when they're teaching in classes and when they're, when they're doing all the positive relationship building as well. And so I want our reports to reflect all of those things that they do.
Yeah, and Scott, I'll just jump in there. I don't want to, you know, speak, you know, put words in people's mouths. But I think one of the, one of the kind of a common experience that we had when we were looking at some of the what's considered best practices for School Resource Officers and in conversations with, you know, with, we had a School Resource Officer who was part of the Task Force and some building, you know, some building administrators who had experience and, you know, that we kind of confirmed that that, that a lot of those best practices were actually being done. And so there's both the kind of a, and you see it here in these recommendations, an interest in, in kind of both sharing and having some, shining a little bit better light on the program and its role and, and as well as creating greater transparency around that so that we have a better way of kind of evaluating the extent to which it's actually meeting the interests and that we're mitigating or minimizing the, you know, the adverse impacts that we want to avoid that are explicit in this report. So I think both of those kind of came out. Another thing that was really interesting, we had a number of parents who had children with some disabilities. And so we spent a lot of time talking about the relationship of School Resource Officers with students who may have specific behavior intervention plans and thinking about moments in which, you know, there's, you know, emergencies or where kind of it's a, it can be a heightened situation, whether it's just something that's in the environment or there's something specific going on with an individual student. And so that was, came up as a key piece of kind of continuing to look to explore of, how do we help, you know, kind of make, ensure the School Resource Officers are, have really a good knowledge of the students at their school so that they can actually be a resource to support those students in times of crises? And not, and, you know, not essentially misinterpret students' kind of unique behavioral manifestations. So that was another thing I kind of want to call out here, though, because we did spend a lot of time talking about that. And it was really appreciative for having, you know, our parents bring that into the room here.
Yeah, one of the other areas that we really focused on too was the recruitment and the training of the SRO into the school and the expectations of the type of officer that's coming in and the experience that they have had in their career. The training requirements are now outlined in state laws to what SROs will have in order to be an SRO. And that we wanted our program to align to all of those same trainings, as well as the expectation of the National Association of School Resource Officer Training for all SROs when they come in. All of this is at the direction of their police department, not us. But we want to ensure that our agreements with them have that expectation built into it. And then additional training around working with students and being able to refer students into counseling or other services. And they're very good at this, and the officers that we currently have are very good. But we want to be sure that the program withstands time and not based on individuals that are good at their work. And so the requirement of two years of previous experience as a commissioned officer and all of the things that we carry forward with those positions, we want to be sure that those are maintained and into the program. And this again is focused in Kirkland, but as we review our program as a district, we want to be sure that these are built into our district-wide program as well. And then we want to be able to keep them. In my work with other districts and talking about SRO programs and looking around, and not all districts approach their SRO program and not all police departments approach their SRO programs in the same way. And so we want to be sure we retain them in their assignments for as long as possible. And sort of innate in the police department is a rotation or promotional opportunities. And so we don't want to get in the way of that, but we want as long-term SRO placements as we can.
So before we move into the House Bill 1216, I want to invite Chief Harris to share some of her comments as a partner with us on this. And then we'll have an opportunity for the Board to ask questions about the Task Force itself.
Thank you very much, Matt. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
All right. I just want to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity to be here tonight and say a few words. And I want to absolutely thank the district as a whole for the long partnership that we have had with our SRO program. I support the Task Force report that you're reading here tonight. I think it's brought some great outside perspectives, certainly on aligning our policies. If you look at our contract, our job description, and our, and again, the various different department policies, ensuring that the goals of the program are clear and aligned is very important. And we support the purpose statement of keeping students out of the criminal justice system. We, just little things like always reintroducing parents to the program was such an epiphany of, certainly as we're going through adding middle school SROs, you know, what will happen next year and how will we, how will we start that? So data collection and reporting, being more robust to ensure that the program is not causing unintended consequences, I think is very important as well. And that process of collecting that, we should look very closely at. I would not want the School Resource Officers asking for personal identification information about someone's personal identity, if that makes sense. about someone's personal identity, if that makes sense. So I think that process is important, but I, but I agree that digging deeper into contacts and being able to report that back is important. And I, I can only tell you, we only, we just have three months of data with middle school SROs this year, and then obviously we've had the high school programs for a while. So we don't have a lot of information this year, but I can tell you that we had eight threat assessments in the district and a number of other contacts. And there was really only one criminal case that, that was investigated at all. And so, you know, just one quick example, that we had an SRO and one of our, one of the associate principals that responded to an incident with an emotional student on campus who had a knife and they were able to just, you know, safely talk that student out of the knife. There was no arrest made. It was all focused on getting that student connected with services. So that, it, it's a program that not only builds great relationships with our community and with students and future, you know, community members here in Kirkland and across the district. But again, we talked about all the training that the SROs receive before they go into the schools. And so when something happens on campus, you're getting an officer who knows all the policies and programs and the students that do have additional planning measures that are in place and you're not just getting whoever is answering the 911 call. So I just want to thank you very much for your support. Very thankful to the task force members that participated. It was, you know, there were some, some great debates as well. And I think it was great information for us all to be listening to our community members and certainly trying to educate them more on the purpose of the SRO program and, and what is really occurring in the schools. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or don't want to ramble on too late at this late hour.
Thank you, Chief Harris. Does the board have any questions regarding the overview of the task force work and recommendations?
Chris, you want to go first?
Well, first I want to say a huge thank you to Chief Harris for sticking with us to this late hour. I apologize for that. But I, I am curious on the recommendations that I'm seeing and I, I, I appreciate the training that's going into the SROs that we're, we're not getting random assignments on annual basis, like many people were committed for a few years. What I'm curious about is one of the pieces I don't see in the recommendations, it would be around whether or not the officers need to be working in uniform or not. And that's just because I'm getting some, because I have both a senior and a freshman in a high school. They've talked to their friends and their friends have all been very enthusiastic about their SROs and kudos to the, the officer in question. But the question has always been, you know, why are they armed in a gun-free zone? And I know that part of the original precipitating event was a national panic about school shootings, which has been replaced by a national panic around COVID and other things. This, but that's one dimension I just don't see addressed at all is the, the outreach to the student population about what could, I don't see a student point of view in here about what would make it them feel better about the program.
Sure. And I, I agree with you that that was, we, we did have, let me just back up and say we did have one student that was involved in the task force.
One kid on from the student kids council, yeah.
Yeah, and I do agree with you and the task force had made some comments about we should have provided and get, gotten more opportunities for additional student involvement. And I, I completely support that. In talking with the school resource officers, you know, Officer King at Lake Washington High School is very open about please go talk to my kids, ask them how I interact with them and how we're doing. This is a commissioned police officer position and that position does require an officer to be in uniform with their vest and their equipment. They're not only just there to provide safety and security for your school, but if something were to happen and it, this is, this occurs from time to time within proximity of the school, the officers are then responding to that as well, not only in an effort to help their partners on the street, but to keep that whatever is occurring from coming onto your campus.
Yeah. I, I guess my, my, my question was more around not taking away their, their arms, but rather could they leave them in the car?
No.
Which would, okay, so that's not on the table. Because the students, honestly, the kids, I haven't gotten any kids who are saying they're making me feel safer. I've got a number of kids who are like, well, the gun does not make me feel safer, but they are very supportive of the social work that's being done, the interventions, the building relationships with the at-risk kids so that they can talk kids down when they're just having a bad day. And all of that social part of the job is something that has huge support among the students. And so anyways, I, I don't want to belabor the point at this late hour, but that's something I'm very interested in continuing to explore for the kids and their, their reactions to it.
Yeah, I totally understand that perspective. And if we just had some clairvoyance in when an incident would require a gun and we could go get it, then that would, that would be, that would alleviate that problem, but you just don't. Knowing when you're going to need a, a tool to protect either that school or someone in your community, we, we just don't have that ability, so.
Well, do we have data on how often they've used their gun in the school?
Uh, you know, I, I think there's a lot of studies that, that show that, that whether or not school resource officers have actually been able to stop an active shooter because they were right there.
Right. Well, that's the whole thing. The idea, first they have to find the active shooter and it's going to be that much faster or that much slower if they had to run to their car to get the gun. But their, their, their real value, as far as I'm concerned, is preventing the active shooter by having, helping kids not go down that route. So the prevention aspect of the social work, it's got nothing to do with stopping an active shooter.
But we're not sure on the data of how many active shooters have been stopped just by the mere presence of the school resource officer. I can tell you, I could give you some data on how much information has been shared with school resource officers of possible threats on campus. So that we have stopped the threat because the kids.
Doing the share assessments is valuable, but do you need to have a gun to do a threat assessment? I'm, I'm just pushing on that as something that I'm a little skeptical that we actually need, sorry, back to my own personal experience, when I've traveled in the third world, there's nothing that makes me feel less secure than having someone with a machine gun on the corner. And so these kids, the only weapon that they're seeing in their lives on a regular basis is being carried by someone in their schools. Does it need to be a weapon there? And I'm going to keep pushing on that piece of.
All right.
Anyway.
All right. I, I think Cassandra had her hand up next. And then Mark.
Thank you. I'm going to make this very brief. Chief Harris, thank you for being here. I know you just mentioned an incident in which a student was safely talked down, a student who had a weapon and there, there was no arrest made. You've got the student, I'm assuming the emotional and mental health supports that the student needed. Do you, is there a way to collect that information? I'm guessing it's really difficult to know when you have prevented a student from going into the criminal justice system, but you had this particular instance that you were able to highlight and do we have any sense of any others along this line?
So all, any kind of contact like that would require an officer to write a case report? So we do have, we know how many case reports have been written. We know, you know, how many court order services have been provided by a school resource officer. Again, we talked about threat assessments, arrests. We know in general how many contacts they made, how many times they're teaching in schools. And then when they do have a, a contact with a student that is serious in nature, maybe there's, you know, we've got some examples of students sharing that they're being bullied and sometimes that's on social media. And so the officers are writing reports and documenting those incidents.
Thank you. And I listened in on your presentation Tuesday, last Tuesday night to the Kirkland City Council. And I appreciated a lot of the council member comments. One of them was, is it possible to create an SRO dashboard? And you probably don't get to decide that. I wanted to know if that's actually something that could be created in theory.
I, I think it could because we're talking about just what we heard from Matt and Scott about what are the data points that you want to collect? And then it's a matter of us collecting, I mean, all of the different police departments in the school district, collecting that data, reporting it. And there's some great tools out there to share that information. You know, we did a use of force that is a local Kirkland company that provides software to put that together. So I don't think that would be a heavy lift at all. I think that we all need to agree on what we're going to collect and, you know, how we're going to do that so it's consistent. But I think that's very doable, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll just add on, I think, and that's one of, going to be one of our, kind of our biggest tasks this year is how do we take the data that we have as a school district in our student information system? How do we take the data that our school resource officers have in terms of making case reports or, or the like? And how do we connect that in such a way that allows us to kind of track that data and disaggregate it at a minimum by the requirements of the, of the state law? And then also thinking about how do we ensure too the privacy, the individual student level privacy? So, and given that we work with multiple ages, police agencies, we also need to have some consistency in that process with each agency. So that's going to be some other ongoing conversation that, you know, this task force helped kind of get us a little bit further down the road with that and thinking about it. But that we, we now have to say, okay, given all of our systems and processes, what's the best way to connect, connect these things? Because we have the demographic data regarding students, which would allow us to disaggregate that. But right now, the contact information is all in the hands of the, the different police agencies. So that's going to be some of our work, which is also one of the reasons why just getting, you know, kind of also making sure that we, we have the, some of the board's interests in mind because we're looking at creating that because we'll have some opportunities to, to hopefully kind of shape that. So when we come back and do a program report in a year, we'll be able to share with the board kind of, you know, really what, you know, what are some of the, those outcomes? The, the threat assessment that we've talked about, that was something new that a new process we put in last year. And, and so that's another piece that we can add into it because that's a, is a really big and important part that we rely on our school resource officers to, to help inform thinking around how do we get the right supports for, for students who might be a threat to, to themselves or others.
Thank you. I was looking at our data dashboard to see disaggregated by gender, by race, by income. And that would be helpful to understand when I'm looking at what type of a disciplinary action was taken, what it resulted in, if it resulted in something that led down the criminal justice path or if it was something that resulted in different supports. That would be helpful information to have.
Yeah, you know, and that's a, it's a great point. Where, right now we can, we, we track exclusionary discipline, which, you know, we, we have a very low exclusionary discipline rate. So we, we kind of hovered between one and one and a half percent over the past few years. And of that, there's only a few kind of disciplinary infractions such as drug possession or drug, you know, dealing drugs, but you know, or possession of a firearm, you know, would be some examples where that would be an automatic referral to the school resource officer. And we would expect that there to be police contact as a result of that, given the severity of it. But the vast majority of our, of our discipline doesn't fall in those lines. And so we actually expect to not have police contact. And so that's another piece that we're going to have to look at is, is when does something that starts as a disciplinary, that relationship also to police contact? Because we have police contact independent or we can have it as a result of, because we, you know, we've found that a student was, was in possession of drugs and we needed, we turned the, the, the drugs over to the school resource officer. So.
And it would be helpful to know disproportionality.
Yep, exactly. Yeah.
You know, you see it.
Yep. And I think we'll get into, in just a second, we'll get into 12, the House Bill, which actually calls out, calls out a lot of disaggregating data and is pretty explicit on the expectations for school districts to having school resource officers. And so I think we found actually as we were going through this process, legislature adopted the House Bill and, and so we kind of held that up and said, actually that, that actually kind of extends the, the direction that the task force was going in, so.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for the board before we dive into that House Bill?
I had one. I'm going to hold my question until, till the end of.
All right. So I'll dig into, we'll dig into House Bill 1216 and I'm going to ask Cedric to help support, kind of talk us through this a little bit because he's been spending the most time with it. But I'll just give a bit of a, kind of an overview. So House Bill 1216 really created an expectation that if school districts or schools are going to employ a school resource officer, that, that they, they need to do certain things to be in compliance with this law. And so those things are, one, we need to adopt an administrative policy regarding school resource officers. There are specific training requirements that are in the House Bill. The task force really kind of dug into the training requirements in advance. So there's a lot of similarity between what the task force was identifying as best practice and what the legislature called out and its training requirements. An annual review and adoption of agreement with agency partners. And so Scott talked earlier about we have entered agreements and we have all these documents that, kind of guiding documents that were created at different times. And so depending on when something was created, we might, we might have an agreement, you know, we might have an agreement with the city of Kirkland that is, is really kind of reflects more of the, the modern interests of our community, but we might have an agreement with another agency that is, is a little bit out of date. And so the expectation is we're actually looking at these on an annual basis and reflecting on them. And that's actually a collaborative process and I think where we continue to look at and it's a kind of a, you're making a commitment to continual improvement of, of the program and ensuring that it's meeting the interests stated. Annual collection of dating, data regarding SRO activities. So that's going to be some of, probably one of our heaviest lists to try to figure out what's the best ways that we can capture data and reflect that back in terms of the impact that the program is having. And so we can have some honest conversations around that, that impact and if that's meeting our interests. And then there is another component that it really needs to, our families need to have the ability to file complaints and a process to investigate those complaints. And that can either be filing that with the district or with a police agency or with both. And so that'll be something that we'll, we'll be digging into. But, so I'm going to have Cedric just kind of give us a high level overview of each of these areas and then we'll have some opportunity for a couple of questions and then we'll talk next steps.
Like Matt and Scott said a little bit earlier, I'm going to process, well, I actually reviewed our current contracts with all our agencies, SRO contracts and up against the new House Bill requirements, kind of merged some of that together. So I finished updating our current contracts and they're currently being reviewed by legal and they're going to be forwarded to the current school district, I mean, the law enforcement agency so they can review it and make sure they're, they're on board with what we got going on there. And we're going to do this on the annual base, annual basis. Like I said, yeah, we're going to review the policies annually to make sure we're in compliance with the House Bill 1216 requirements and all those things. So we're going to do that yearly. And an important part about that too, especially with everything going on in the country right now regarding S, uh, school resource officers and should they, police departments be defunded? Should we remove police officers from schools and all the other stuff? We want to make sure we're transparent with our annual reviews and that's why it's going to be imperative for we include the students, parents and teachers and people of the community to make sure that they're involved with the process to see what their SROs are going, doing. Like I said, we want to be as transparent as possible.
And I'll just add here, I think one of the real benefits of, of working And I'll just add here, I think one of the real benefits of, of working with the city of Kirkland on the task force is that actually that model really is one that we could just replicate on an annual basis with, and be inclusive across the district because it, it really did meet that interest. Another thing that I want to just call out here that I think is really important is that there, you know, we're going to need to make sure that we continually reiterate with our school administrators and our school resource officers, you know, kind of the differing roles in which, what are the responsibilities of school administrators regarding discipline situations? So that we're, we're not asking our school resource officers to step into situations that really, you know, wouldn't require, normally require a police officer. I think, you know, I've heard one of our principals say, it's like, you know, I, how do you make that decision of when to involve a school resource officer? And she indicated that, you know, she asked herself, if she'd pick up the phone to call, then that's, that's when she, you know, involved the school resource officer. So we want to make sure that that's really, that's really clear for our school administrators as well. So that they're not, you know, that they're not kind of blurring some of those, those lines. We definitely heard that within the task force and the community of just being really intentional around that. All right, so Cedric, here's the training. We talked a little about NASRO. I don't know if there's anything in here that goes above and beyond the NASRO requirements that you want to call out.
Yeah, but I've been working with all the agencies and most of our agencies already meet a lot of these requirements for House Bill 1216. And, and if they don't, they're definitely, they're working on to make sure they meet all the requirements before the start, the start of the school year. And if anyone sticks out, not in, in particular, but I just want to reiterate to the board and everybody, it's the police agent departments that are responsible for ensuring that their SROs are in compliance with the specific training related to House Bill 1216. It's our job as a district, probably, probably me, that makes sure that all the requirements are met. Like I said, annually, and I review those and, and make sure we're in compliance with all of that. So Matt, I'm not seeing anything in particular, if you want to add anything as far as anything that sticks out with you.
Well, I know, you know, Scott and I have talked that we have an interest to, and we heard in the task force of, you know, we're, we're, as an organization, we're engaged in a lot of work and thinking about how do we build our, you know, our leadership capacity to really lean into conversations around racial equity? And ensuring that our school resource officers are, are a part of those conversations is in the same way that we've engaged with them and thinking about school safety and, and, and kind of think our behavioral supports and particularly around our behavioral health support. So, so we as a, we have an interest in making sure that our school resource officers are engaged in the conversations that we're having to ensure that, you know, that we are examining our own biases. And so that we're, we're helping our students come into schools that they feel safe and that they feel seen. And, and here's just, I'm going to just the, this is where we get to the annual data collection. And you can see that the legislature calls for, for some real kind of basic outlines, some of which the, the police agencies wouldn't have, wouldn't be collecting that data. Specifically if a student's engaged in a program such for special education services or 504, that would not be information that would be available unless otherwise volunteered by, by a student. So as we go in, in developing the system, we've talked about it a little bit earlier. We're going to have to do some work to say, what, what's the information that each agency has? What's the granular level of detail? And how do we, how do we set up a system that allows us to, to be able to report back to the board for us to be able to use internally? So, and so that we're able to look to see, are we getting the type of outcomes that, that we want from our school resource officer program? And are we avoiding the types of incidents or disproportionality that, that our community is rightly concerned about? So that, so I think this would be where we have some opportunities to really kind of go in and, and go beyond this. And the, the task force recommendation actually did go beyond this. Some of the recommendations we talked about in the task force, particularly around gender identity or sexual orientation, that's not data that we have as a school system. And so there would be some things that we may not, even though the task force had an interest in that, that we just may not be able to, to reflect that data. But we can certainly, if it's data that we have, we can look at how we, how we kind of match that up against the connection with our school resource officers. And then Cedric, do you want to talk a little bit about the complaint process?
Yeah, we're in a process, like I said, establishing a complaint process. And one thing that we want to make sure, well, I know the district, because I'm sure law enforcement agencies as well, want to make sure that all complaints are taken seriously and the process is easy for people to, to file a complaint if they want needed. And also to make sure they're investigated fairly. So just going to come up with a process to try to make sure it's easy for people to use as well as they have faith in us as it's going to be investigated properly and fairly, whether it's with the school district or through any local law enforcement agency, so.
Great. So before we talk about moving forward, I'll just get, this is another opportunity for if there's questions regarding the House bill and expectations that it has of us moving forward.
Yeah, no one else has one, I have one.
His hand up and then I, Siri.
Question for you. Going back to the, the training slide. I think it was bullet five that talked about dealing with students with special needs. Can we go back to that real quick? Back again?
Yep.
There we go.
Was it here, specific training?
Yeah, it's, it's the one real small, yeah, there we go. Educational rights of students with disabilities. It occurs to me that this is a good opportunity, not only in their specific training for the, the resource officer, but also for the kids in special needs to get to know what an officer looks like, what they, you know, what, not to feel like. I have a son who has limited communication skills. And, and if you told him to stop, he's probably more than likely going to run. And my thought is not only having the, the officer in his training or her training learn more about how to deal with these kids, but also then taking that knowledge and then being able to familiarize the kids with them and what a uniform means, should mean to them. In addition to that, I'm wondering then if once this officer is trained, being able to take that kind of, kind of the information that he, he or she has gleaned from their experiences with the special needs students back to the department so they can better have an appreciation for what they're dealing with when they have a student who may not be very communicative, may have a device around his, his neck to communicate with. It, just a thought, I, that thought occurred to me and I wanted to kind of lay it out there for y'all.
Yeah.
As you're looking at a problem that you might be instituting, that it could be kind of a two-way street of education, if you will.
Yeah, actually, there, I'll just give a very brief summary of a story that the school, the school resource officer who participated in the task force shared, that I actually kind of got right to that, that he had developed familiarity with the needs of, of some students with disabilities at the school that he was assigned to. And there was an, there was an instance where, where a student who was, was actually independently walking, walking and doing quite well on his, on his own, but it caused a little bit of an alarm with, I believe it was either that he maybe had a hello from his family and, and that because they'd had prior interactions, was able to kind of successfully connect with the student and just ensure that the student was safe, was on a busy, on a busy road. And so, so I think that was one of the interests that was highlighted as, as possibilities and, and kind of gets to the educational aspects of the school resource officers. I don't know, Chief Harris, if, if you're still on, if you want to talk about maybe how school resource officers bring back their, kind of their, their knowledge of working with, with youth to their, their colleagues, that's.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I actually was just looking at some of the recaps while you were talking and, you know, there, we had an incident that happened this year where a special needs middle school student actually missed their bus and did not make it home. But the SRO was able to locate that student and provided the information about the student and kind of their special needs to the rest of patrol who are out looking for that student. We were able to successfully get them home. So I, I think that that's, they definitely share their training and their experiences with the rest of the patrol force. And then they also go on to be supervisors most of the time in this agency. It's definitely incredible professional development, working with school staff, parents and students. So as, as you can see, teachers become administrators, it's very similar for SRO and, and police officers in those positions.
Chief Harris, I want to thank you for being here. One of the things I, I really would like to help have the officers be able to identify when they see, many kids, such as my son, carries what they call a speech generating device. Basically, he may not be able to tell an officer what his address is, but he can punch the buttons. If he's, if the officer says, can you, on your machine, can you tell me where you live, what your name is? And if they know that that's not just, it looks like a Sony Walkman, for God's sakes. I mean, he's old enough to remember Sony Walkmans. But the idea of having that and the fact that they may be able to glean that information from a source other than the child's verbal abilities.
Right, that, those are definitely things that are covered in training. And it's, you know, all national training that's being provided, so yes.
Great. Just thought I'd ask. Thank you, ma'am.
Siri, did, your hand went up and then down. Did you still have a question?
I'm good. Let's go.
I'm good as well.
Okay. All right, so then moving forward, what we see is our next steps is we'll place the task force recommendations on another coping board meeting for acceptance. We'll be adopting an administrative policy that's consistent with the requirements of the new RCW. We are, as you heard Cedric talking about, we're in the process of updating our contracts with each agency. And then at that point in time, we begin an annual process for, for reviewing that. So right now, we're just trying to get them current from a legal standpoint with each of the, the agencies. And then, and then really kind of more of our kind of creative work is going to be around establishing a data collection process. And so you've heard we have some technical work to figure out, but then I think we are also, you know, interested in hearing kind of, you know, taking what the task force has recommended as some data points to, to look at. And if the board has some interest there as well. And then, and then create an ongoing work, work group that's, that really kind of replicates what we did within, with Kirk in partnership with Kirkland and does that on an annual basis with all of our, all of our agencies, so. I know if there are any kind of additional comments or thoughts from the, the board before we wrap the night or additional questions, I'd love to, to hear them.
One quick thought, you know, it's, I think we have the data where we can see if there are problems, if there's disproportionality issues. I, I'm really, I'm really wrestling with, I'm curious to your thoughts on, how do we, how do we know? What would the data look like that would show us whether this is working? What, how, how do we even know whether we are keeping students out of the criminal justice system? I mean, what would that look like? What are those, what is that data?
Yeah, so I think there, there's going to be a couple of things we're going to want to look at. I think we're going to want to look at the connection between, oh, I'm sorry, my video seems to have frozen. So you're just, you're getting my voice. The connection between, I talked with my hand, so, between kind of the, the discipline. So from what are we doing, we're, we've been trying to make some really intentional efforts to reduce, reduce exclusionary and certainly punitive discipline. And we're also looking to the extent that, that those actions are disproportionately borne by students on the basis of, whether it's on the basis of race or the basis of, of identification within a program. So I think we'd want to look to see, what is the connection or the through line to referrals to school resource officers? And, you know, so are we making referrals for things that really, there's not a basis for, right? Are we making referrals? So let's say, you know, are we disproportionately referring students? So if we have an equal number of students from any category that, let's say for drug use, where we might expect there to be a referral, but maybe we're, we're seeing that only some students are getting referred and others aren't. I think that's, that's going to tell us that we, that we have some concerns around the way in which we're, we're implementing the program. There's some other, it gets a little bit trickier when I think when we're looking at preventative measures. We have moved to, to the school threat assessment team model. And so, and we have our community transparency board model. So we have these team-based models that are really, when we're looking at students who are either avoiding school or who are exhibiting some behaviors that potentially indicate they, they, they might pose a threat. And our school resource officers are parts of, play a role in both of those, but they're, they're actually restorative processes. And so we can look at their involvement from a process. But, but we may not necessarily see that they lead to, to anything else. I think we broadly can look to see, are there some other things where we're reducing areas that do lead to the criminal justice connections? But, but the, the big thing I would think what we heard in the task force and would, would key on, in on initially is, are we looking at disproportionately referring students? That in instances that ostensibly could lead to a police contact that might lead to an arrest or some further engagement beyond the school resource officer. Beyond that, it gets a little bit fuzzy to kind of, kind of track how that's outcome. So, and that's not a great. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I'd like to be able to point to something and saying, you know, it's working for this street. We know it's working because, you know, the data is showing us this, but it, okay, that's fine. That's a fine answer. Thank you. Mark's hand went up and then Siri's. I'm sorry, Mark, I'm now, I'm going to pass over you again. Siri hasn't had a chance to chime in.
I'm muted. Me or somebody else?
Uh, we'll go Siri and then Mark.
Okay.
So Mike, just a quick question. It's around sort of the, the data and those sorts of things. We talk a lot about that and I know it mentioned in the presentation in regards to some of the qualitative work and being able to do interviews or that piece. So I'm assuming that will be built into the process because the numbers are so small in this environment, especially when you start to disaggregate by these groups. I think it's going to have to be in conversation with experience and perception, so. What's your take with that?
Well, I think that's what should come out of the annual process when we're, because it's actually that the process the legislature has spelled out has, is really challenging districts to engage with communities around, around this. And so, so I would expect that what we're going to want to do is to build a process that gathers, that gathers that, you know, kind of that qualitative or experiential, you know, on an ongoing basis. And I think we also want to be really thoughtful about doing it in a way that's sustainable. Oftentimes when we go and we'll, we'll do these, we, you know, we'll commission groups to come in and they, you know, they'll interview hundreds of people. And we get that, and that was great for that moment in time, but it, it's really difficult to replicate that on an annual basis to tell us if we're making, you know, progress. So I think that's, that's why I called out our data collection piece is, is going to be something really important that we're going to build this year and that ongoing annual review process is also going to be really important. And like I, I think Scott talked about, when we first started the task force and I, I really got to credit some of our community members who kind of looked around the room and said, hey, we, not everybody's at the table that needs to be at the table. And so I thank them for their courage in saying that. And then I think it was also, you know, it was a testament. And then I think it was also, you know, it was a testament to the folks leading, leading the task force to say, okay, let's, let's make sure that we get the right people at the table. So so I think that's where you're gonna see that out in getting that kind of anecdotal or experiential reflection on how the school resource officer program is or isn't living up to its ideals.
So so then the other question, and I'm not even sure if it's possible, because we have resource officers in all our schools, is, is there to find a comparison option that you can look at who doesn't have a resource officer and what's that experience with that schools within those environment? We don't have that possibility because we fund it everywhere at this point.
Yes.
I would toss that out as an option if it possibly exists, that at least might give an idea as to a potential success.
Yeah.
One option would be to use our Kirkland Middle Schools almost as a case study because they haven't had a school resource officer and now they do. So to be able to actually develop some questions to get after what changed as a result of having a school resource officer on campus. So that might be one way to gather, you know, the the data in a way from a school that we know, we know the staff, we generally know the the experiences of our middle school students and our middle school staff, but in that we could get some comparative data.
And you could potentially retrospectively look at what the reporting was prior.
Yep.
I don't know, great. Thank you, that's sort of, I, great work, it's good that it's aligning, it was very useful that this task force was done this last year to be able to inform the information and and the current environment we're in right now. So I think you're touching on all the key issues and topics and they were talked about before and we had good people at the table and the fact that that will continue, I think is really helpful.
Yeah. I'll say then that the conversation regarding bias in policing was very much something that was part of the whole, was a through line through the whole task force, so.
Thank you.
Any last questions, comments from the board? Okay, well, thanks everyone.
Eric, before we wrap up, I just want to take a quick minute to recognize our team here. Cedric, I believe, started in the district three days before we went to full closure and he has actively engaged in all of these processes and has really become a part of Lake Washington School District in this, in this setting. And so, you know, a huge kudo to him to come on board in that format, yet to really, you know, ingrain himself in the work with the team and be really become part of our district leadership team. So kudos to him. And I also want to recognize Scott Emery. He has really facilitated the relationship with our police agencies for many, many years. And the program wouldn't be in as good a shape as it currently is without his ongoing leadership over the years. And it's nice that we have this opportunity to, you know, evaluate, you know, look how we can make things better. But I do know that Scott and his ongoing work has really been an asset to the district and the agencies in the implementation of this program. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, John.
That concludes our study session for tonight. Thanks, everyone. The board will now convene an executive session at, let's call it 10:32. For, I don't know, how long do we think this will go, half an hour? Yes?
Twenty-four minutes.
Okay, excellent, for twenty-four minutes, for the purposes, a purpose of considering selection of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase and the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or lease. This meeting will reconvene at 11:00 and there will be no board action following the executive session. The July 13 study session is now adjourned. Cedric, nice to see you. I hope.